I'd like to call this meeting of the Monticello City Council to order. Would you please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing as Rodney Burris leads us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Father, thank you so much for bringing us together again. We ask you to be with us as we make decisions that will prayerfully benefit this city, give us wisdom and strength. In your name we pray. Amen?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Woodham?
Here.
Mr. Carey?
Here.
Liveley? Ms. Yoon?
Mr. Burris?
Here.
Mr. Broderick?
Here.
Mr. Coon?
Here.
And we have Cora. Thank you. Public participation, in-person participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address council from the seat and table provided. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. Heather Sights? Did I guess right?
Yeah, you're right. Most people do. Thank you. Well, I'm Heather Sights. I've met some of you, or you've gotten emails from me. I'm with First of Five Illinois. This is Kim Dye. She also works with me. And so what our job, if you've not heard about us, is we have been tasked, we're in infrastructure throughout all the state of Illinois. And our task is to look at early childhood and education and care for zero to five-year-olds. And so we've, the community, we talk to families, we hear what's going on, what's working, what's not working, barriers they're facing, and then we bring that back. We have a family council made up of, we have several Monticello families that are part of our family council. We also have an action council that's made up of community members like you. We have some principals, United Way, librarians, health department, and so on, anyone interested in improving the lives of children zero to five. And so we take that information and we created recommendations and an action plan. We take that information back to the state and we say, hey, these are the needs that families are saying that they need or barriers they're facing and the changes we're asking. But also, we come to local community members and say, here are things locally that we can do or need to be done. And one of those things, we kept hearing over and over, for Piatt County was the need, people do not know where to go to find resources. So we collaborated with several community members, the Do-It Piatt County Health Department, the Heart of Illinois Community Foundation, Kirby Medical, Piatt County Mental Health Center, the library, so on and so forth, just different people in the community. We came together, created a project. The Do-It Piatt County Health Department amazingly took it on. Tabitha Thomas, if you don't know her, get to know her, she's amazing. She collected all the resources, put them together in this booklet. Heart of Illinois Community Foundation and Kirby Medical sponsored and paid for it. We printed about 3,000 printed guides. We also, if you, if you didn't, let us know, you're supposed to get a postcard in the mail saying the information. These are at libraries, they're hopefully going to be at the police department, they will be hopefully at your city buildings, just anywhere out in the community, the health department, obviously, the mental health center, anywhere, so that families know that this is available. And if you can, the ask here today that we're coming to you is just to share this information, right? Because when families are in crisis, they forget that this is available. So the more they see it, if you can share it on any social media, your personal social media, if you work for an organization, if you can share that out, and just, and keep sharing it, right? Like, once is not enough. Like, you need to, you know, schedule it so that, you know, every three months, you're resharing this information, so that when families do get into crisis and they go, oh, it's back-to-school time, and I don't know where to go for school supplies, or to get help with, you know, my kid's shoes, I think they need specific shoes for gym, because they always do, right? You know, they know where to turn. They can turn to the resource guide and find out where in the community. And the beauty of what Tabitha did was, you know, Piatt County is a smaller county, and so some of the resources aren't necessarily available here. So she also included resources that are in, you know, Decatur, Champaign, Clinton, and so forth. So if they can't find them specifically in Piatt County, there's also where to go in outside counties to find that information. So we have flyers for you, if you can share these out. We have printed copies for each of you. And then we also have just an informational flyer about what First of Five is. If you haven't met us, if you haven't seen us out in the community, just get to know us. My email is on here, if you want to contact me. If you want printed guides, if you have an office somewhere that you want to share this information out, we can give you flyers, we can give you printed guides. And that's about it, so.
Okay. Any questions? Thanks for coming. Appreciate the information.
Okay. I'll pass this out.
Remote participation. This is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. Anyone this evening more?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's go on to consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims report, claims dated June 24, 2025, through July 14, 2025. Meeting minutes, city council meeting minutes, June 23, 2025. Closed session meeting minutes, June 23, 2025. Planning and zoning board meeting minutes, May 19, 2025. Treasurer's report, April 2025, May 2025. Permit report, June 2025. Police report, June 2025. Fire report, June 2025. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
No move.
Is there a second? Okay. I mean, comments or questions of city staff about anything? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Yoon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you. Moving on to the mayor's report, July the 14th. Zible House is transitioning from a short-term rental business to a residential rental house after eight years in operation. We wish Mike and Samantha the best on their next venture. The Monticello Farmers Market is now offering link match for SNAP clients. Visit the Monticello Farmers Market on Thursdays from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. in downtown Monticello. The Southern 401 in Steam is running this weekend at the Monticello Railway Museum. And don't forget to support Monticello Small Business. New business, ordinance 2025-47, ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Monticello and Willow Branch Kennel Incorporated concerning the property located at 1412 North Market Street, Monticello, Illinois. Callie?
Thank you, Mayor. So we are presenting before you tonight the fall round of the Building Improvement Grant. We had nine applications submitted. The review committee recommended approving eight and then sent one back for kind of a tweaking, and so they're still considering that one. And if everyone comes to an agreement, it'll be back before you at the next meeting. But the first one up is 1412 North Market Street. Willow Branch Kennel has purchased that property and is requesting funds to assist with a new signage face, two rooftop air conditioning units, recoating the roof of the back half of the building, and then painting the Quonset hut in the rear of the property. Estimated project cost is just under $40,000, and the recommended reimbursement is 50% of, excuse me, 50% of the project cost up to $10,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-47?
Can I ask one question?
Oh, you can ask questions after the motions are made.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now you can ask your question.
This is the bullying alley, right?
Correct.
Okay. Good.
Anyone else have a question or comment? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Yoon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Question passes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-48, an ordinance approving redevelopment agreement between the city of Monticello and Thureno LLC concerning the property located 1,000 Innovation Parkway, Monticello, Illinois. Callie?
Thank you. I believe you all are aware, but Thureno is the UK-based company that purchased the property in 2019, kind of back behind Willow Tree there, has a nice shiny new road going to it. But they set up their US headquarters in Monticello, so we're pretty fortunate about that. They've also purchased the General Cable building and have some plans for that as well. So we're very excited to have them in our community. But the company itself processes lecithin from soybeans and sunflowers, and they're about eight to 10 employees right now. They also purchased key labs in Decatur and located them under their roof here, so just growing, and we're, again, it's pretty exciting to see. That being said, they do have plans that the Planning and Zoning Board will hear later this month regarding the remaining 30 acres, including General Cable that they own. But as it relates to this particular request, they have a need for some upgraded heaters in the warehouse area where their manufacturing tanks and everything are. Estimated project cost is $22,488, and the review committee recommended 50% of the project cost up to $10,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-48?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions, Callie? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Yoon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Question passes.
Moving on to ordinance 2025-49, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Monticello and Perrin Tom Incorporated concerning the property located at 122 North Charter Street, Monticello, Illinois. Callie?
Thank you, Mayor. So this building is the building that houses Subway, and the facade, the plaster on the facade is failing. It's got some cracks, there's some water infiltration there, and the owner would like to replace the exterior plaster with something similar to the look of Legends that you see there. And total project cost is estimated at $32,000. The review committee recommended 50% of the project up to $10,000.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-49?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions of Callie before we vote? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Yoon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Question passes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-50, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Monticello and Viabin Products LLC concerning the property located at 226 West Livingston Street, Monticello, Illinois. Callie?
Thank you. Viabin Products is the owner of the great commemoration on Livingston and Market that everyone is familiar with, and they would like to update their signage to reflect their current branding. I'm sure everyone knows what they do, but they extract specialty oils, wheat germ oil, CBD products. They celebrate their 80th year next year, I'm sorry, 90th year next year. So that's a pretty exciting thing, 90th year in Monticello. So the review committee recommended 50% of the cost of the project up to $10,000.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-50?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions of Callie? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call?
Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Yoon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Question passes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-51, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Monticello and T and R Ventures LLC concerning the property located at 315 West Washington Street, Monticello, Illinois. Callie?
Thank you, Mayor. This property is obviously historic, but it's not in the National Historic District. That being said, we still want to make sure that we're respecting the historic character of it. So the review committee was pretty particular about that one as well. But the property itself, it has the short-term rental and potential retail space upstairs, and then the tavern use in the basement, which I'm told, once the countertop gets in, it will be opening. They've been waiting on that for a while. So the owner of the property would like to replace the roof and guttering, there's some masonry repair and tuck pointing, and then there's some siding on the southeast corner that he would like to replace as well. Total project cost is $16,120, and the review committee recommends 50% of the project up to $8,060.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-51? Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions of Callie? Is this the Red House?
Yes.
Thank you. I was going to ask the same question. Thanks.
Need to remember the local name for it, right?
No questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Yoon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Question passes.
Ordinance 2025-52, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Monticello and Monticello Theater Association concerning the property located at 6 North Market Street, Monticello, Illinois. Callie?
Thank you, Mayor. So MTA would like to make the following improvements: replace the north and south garage doors, clean and repaint the outside of the garage doors, and replace the seal and the doorstop molding. There's some rotting issues there, I believe. And then reframe the walls on the interior to strengthen it. It'll also allow them to do a little more with the set design. Total project cost is 32,000, excuse me, $3,279, and the review committee recommends 50% of the project up to $1,640.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-52?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we just covered all that.
All?
Yeah. Could do a lot for the community.
Is that allowable?
We don't have that type of flexibility in the budget for this program, so unless we have another area we can pull it from, but that's up to the council.
I appreciate the idea, but we pulled from enough of the budget to...
Okay.
We have taken a lot out lately.
The nice thing is...
Appreciate the theater, but I'm just saying.
And they're doing a lot of the, actually, they're doing all the labor themselves, which saves on their part, too.
Right. Good, good thought.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve 2025-52?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments or questions of Callie? Hearing or seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Coon? Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Question passes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-53, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Monticello, Mower Shop, property located at 314 West Bridge Street, Monticello, Illinois. Callie?
Thank you, Mayor. Mower Shop, many of you know, I know nothing about it, but it's currently located at 314 West Bridge Street. The property owner would, or tenant, would like to replace the existing roof. There's some leaking going on there. And the roof would be a tin roof, matching the porch that was constructed last year. Total project cost, or estimated project cost, is $13,451, and the review committee recommends 50% of the project up to $6,726.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-53? Second?
Second.
Any comments or questions, Callie? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Yoon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Question passes.
Moving on, ordinance 2025-54, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement between the city of Monticello and Jackson Property Development concerning the property located at 315 West Main Street, Monticello, Illinois. Callie?
Thank you, Mayor. I will say, and this is, this, all these are approved tonight, this will be 49 grants the city of Monticello has issued in five years for a total investment of $433,000 plus a little for public, to 1.7 million in private investment, and 2.1 million total. So that's pretty huge, especially if you consider the number of windows and roofs and tuck pointing, and we're getting some really good improvements out of our buildings that might not have happened before this grant. So, back to your item. Jackson Property Development, which is 315 West Main, LLC is the owner. They already started, but the property is down by the main scoop on West Main Street. They want to reconstruct the front brick wall where it's needed and install new windows and doors. I will say, they worked with Kettie Hudson, with the Historic Preservation Commission to make sure that their improvements were honoring the historic part of the property. If you saw the rendering, it's pretty exciting what it's going to look like, and given the shortage we have of space in our community, especially for commercial space, it's, I don't think they'll have a problem filling it. But estimated project cost is $68,000. Recommended reimbursement is 50% up to $15,000.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-54?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, I need a roll call.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Yoon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Question passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Alderman's reports. Tom?
Well, I guess it's maybe a little late, but had the garden walk, service garden walk on Saturday.
Yeah.
And there were six gardens, three, or excuse me, four in or around town, a couple of them out on Route 10, and there was over 300 people that attended. And the reason I'm breaking it up is, we had the privilege of being one of them, my wife did.
Thank you.
Kind of get dragged along into it. So it was very, very well attended, and actually, if you remember, Saturday was a very, very nice day. Temperature was very pleasant, nice breeze, just had a little riddle rain at one time, but it didn't last very long. So it went over very, very well.
See, I forgot about it, and I drove by here, and there was all this stuff set up in the lot over here, and I thought, good God, what's Callie got set up over here? But then I realized it was, realized it was master gardener walk. So, sorry, Callie. I thought you'd moved it up here.
Well, I say it every time, but it's worth saying again, thank you to Callie and the rest of the committee. The numbers she threw out, it's obvious that this is a great program that we've been able to do, and the downtown looks better and better every year.
It does. You're right. Thank you. Cole?
Nothing tonight.
Ryan?
I concur with Ryan. I'm, having been a part of the committee, I appreciate all the work and consideration that goes into it, and I think it's done a great part in revitalizing the community for Monticello.
Good. Thank you. Rodney?
I just wanted to have Terry tell the reunification team that doing a lovely job. We walk behind the building on the best trail. Pretty about out there, it's very nice, so, thank you. You got the good work.
Will do.
I concur with that, even with the plants downtown when I walk the dogs. It's just like, you know, Hank always has a look in Dairy Queen, who's my friend. But no, they've done a wonderful job. But I do not have anything else to say.
Mike?
Nothing today.
Nothing tonight. Police Chiefs report, Rob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first six months of the year, the police department responded to just under 1,700 trouble stories. Not too bad if you consider, there for a while, we're running a five-person department, six months we got faith now, one in the academy and one on military leave. So there's that. The new officers are really coming together, doing, they're doing a fantastic job. They, I expected to be working now in about two or three years, just with kind of the investigative skills, what a lot of them are doing, they're very proactive. The one thing I made clear with the new officers is we're no longer a department that just sits down and waits for things to come to us. We want to be proactive, we want to keep Monticello in higher regards. So I do like the, and it's not just all tickets, a majority of what we issue are our warnings. It's just trying to get the people, slow down, stop the stop signs, you know, reduce accidents, reduce definitely injury accidents, because we've seen a lot of those, not so much here but in the area, fatalities unfortunately, and a lot of young kids' fatalities, which is something that Deputy Bros and I have kind of spoke about, and may try to work with drivers at this fall, doing some of their safety presentations. So one thing I did want to thank, especially to Alderman, Woodham, he came to me with a concern that one of his constituents had. Please, if you ever have a question, and I understand a lot of people get their info off of Facebook, and shockingly, Facebook doesn't have all the answers.
Oh, yeah.
I know. It's, it's a fast to me. We encourage people to call us. It's not some sort of top-secret thing, what we do. I mean, certain things are, but in this case, it was an ordinance issue that we've known for a little bit, we gave the abatement notice, we started issuing citations, so we are in the process of getting that remedied. Like I kind of explained to everyone, ordinances take time. I don't like it any more than the next person, but we do address it as soon as we know about it. More times than not, the person there takes care of it, or the landlord, or whatever the case may be. Some others take a little extra time. That's what we want to keep track of. So thank you for the email. As soon as I get it, I try to get an answer and try to get it pushed out as soon as I can, but you all have my number by all means. If you have something pop up, give me a call, and I can get you an answer. If I don't know, right away, I'll, I'll get that answer.
Good. Thank you. Fire Chiefs report, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Part of our department ran 41 calls last month. We did some good training last month. We did vehicle extrication. I don't know if you noticed in the parking lot, we had two vehicles a couple weeks ago, and we cut those up pretty good. Taken apart, so we have to. Then the next week, we did driver training. Every year, we have to go out and test our firefighters on driving the big red trucks.